Yes, this comes on. Can they hear us now? Who are you texting?
No, I just got one from somebody at home saying that the sound was wonky. Okay, it's good now. Good evening, welcome to the regular council meeting of the Borough of Beach Haven. It is Monday, September 12th at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First amendment to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in the Beach Haven Municipal Building, on the Borough website, and mailing the same to the Beach Haven Times, the Asbury Park Press, and the Press of Atlantic City. Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Here.
Dr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor Lambert?
Here. Okay. Before we get into the meeting itself, we have a couple of presentations to make tonight. And the first one is to a young lady who could not be here, she's on Zoom, I assume. And her name is Keely Strong. And Mary Claire Bunce and her mom put together a little biopic that I'd like to read now to tell you about her contribution to Beach Haven. The council would like to take a minute to thank a young lady who has worked long and hard to create something for Beach Haven kids. Keely Strong of Downingtown, Pennsylvania, made a wonderful contribution to the Borough of Beach Haven this past August. She built the free Little Children's Library and Kindness Rock and Shell Garden that has been installed in the playground behind Bay Village between Ninth Street and Taylor Avenue. The library was combined, was a combined project for her high school graduation and her Girl Scout troop. Completion of this enterprise has earned her the Silver Award with Girl Scouts, which is the highest award a cadet Girl Scout can receive. This plan required a lot of hard work and determination on her part and took her several years to complete. She held a community book drive where she collected a thousand books, taught sessions on kindness to Girl Scout troops, and had them donate painted rocks and shells for the garden. Additionally, she had to overcome some challenges during COVID with gathering building materials and supply chain issues. Keely persevered and completed this beautiful, well-made library for all of Beach Haven's residents and visitors to enjoy. Keely has been spending her summers in Beach Haven Gardens since she was born. She hopes that children who live in or visit Beach Haven will enjoy the book selection and take, trade, or donate a book, shell, or rock. Keely related that she had a team of mentors helping her with the build. She would like to thank the Downingtown Service Unit, Troop 4102, many other Girl Scout troops who helped her along the way, anonymous donors, Mayor Colleen Lambert and council members of the Beach Haven Borough, Mary Claire Bunce and Chris Carson, and the staff of Beach Haven Borough, Teresa Mendez for the beautifully painted shell, Tiffany Joyner, author of The Furry Mouse, children's books, and Spice It Up for their support. I would just like to add that, you know, it was very kind of Keely to thank us, but actually, we're the ones who should be thanking her. Her kindness, her hard work, her dedication, and giving such a generous gift to our community really says a lot about her character, and we are the ones who are grateful. So, Keely, hopefully, you're on, you're out there, and a big thank you from the Beach Haven Borough Council and all of our residents. Thank you very much. All right, now we have another award to give, big night here. I'm going to ask that Chief Megan Morrow, Captain Steve McNamara, and First Lieutenant Artur Bueen come up, please.
It's wonderful, for a second year in a row that we're getting awards to our Beach Patrol. We probably give them one every day, but, you know, they get much for everything, so we'll do one to you. And this one actually comes from the Ocean County Business Development and Tourism Department, and it's from Vision Director Sandra Lozaro and Commissioner, who was the liaison, Joseph DeGarry. And it says, "The Ocean County Business Development and Tourism recognizes the Beach Haven Beach Patrol. Ocean County recognizes the exceptional lifeguard professionals on National Lifeguard Recognition Day and every day. The gratitude for keeping our residents and visitors of Ocean County safe. You are the backbone of the tourism industry. Thank you for your dedication and service." And all of us would like to echo that, and I'm sure I'm speaking for everybody in these meetings. Thank you all so much for looking into this.
Yeah, back to business as usual.
Cash receipts in the current fund account for the period of August 1st through August 31st were $5,258,832.73. Cash dispersments in the current fund account for the month of August 2022 total $5,263,751.94. Cash balance in the current fund account as of this period totaled $14,947,921.79. Cash receipts in the water utility account for the period of August 1st through August 31st were $191,615.38. Cash dispersments in the water utility account for the month of August totaled $784,162.30. And the cash balance in the water utility account as of August 31st was $4,289,498.6, submitted by our treasurer, Sharon Bowler. She also provided me with a year-end beach badge revenue report. At the end of the year, our badge revenue totaled $503,730. It's lower than our revenue from last year. Left revenue at the end of the season of 2021 was $536,762. Because the other recreations are still operating until 15, we'll have those recreation reports after.
Thank you.
I have minutes without formal reading of July 28th Agenda Meeting, the July 28th Executive Session, an August 8th Regular Meeting, an August 8th Executive Session, and then August 25th Agenda Meeting.
Everybody have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any questions or anything? Okay.
Paul Baker?
Aye.
Ordinance 2022-19C in ordinance to require Knox boxes at new commercial buildings, existing commercial buildings with improvements requiring names for approval, existing commercial buildings and certain multifamily residential buildings. First reading.
Since this is the first reading, there is no public comment, but I do see the Chief Alleners here. So, I think it would not be out of line that if anybody has a comment or a question, might be wonderful to take advantage of our expert while he's here. Okay, same note. And I did check with Sherry earlier, and the businesses have all been notified and are aware that this is in the office.
We sent out an email to our business list through our market tile license database, and once we introduce, I'll send a copy of the directive as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, is there, is there any comment among the council? No? No? Yeah, I think we had a very good presentation before. Is there a motion to approve 2022-19C? Is there a second?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yeah.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-20C in ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 199, Vehicles and Traffic, Part 4, Electric Vehicles, subsection 55, Designation of Spaces, in the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey. First reading.
Again, first reading, so there is no public comment. Anybody on the council wish to discuss anything on this? No, this one's pretty cut and dry.
Well, it's the location of the second charging station.
So, there is one at Veterans Park.
Right.
On Lambert Street side. And then there's one at the public parking lot next to Batteries, but it's more on the, it's more on the Dock Road side, Center Street side, so it has a Dock Road ID. Yes. Yes, also we should be activating on Thursday. Yes, considering that the two that we have have been a roller coaster of working and not working these past eight months, nightmare with 5G upgrades, modem failures, one of them is completely, the one at Taylor is head replacement, completely out of service, can't get a head replacement, can't get a phone on a head replacement. It's been a juggling act. So, I'm looking forward to having two new stations with four more ports that can accommodate users.
Is there a limit? The maximum time amount to be in these parking spaces, especially because that's a kind of a demand area?
There's no limit, but if you're attached to that charger, even if it's not generating electricity, you're being charged. So, it would be move, you finish it up, unhook it, and move. EBC dedicate.
I believe we got a letter from somebody who didn't realize that and was shocked at their bill, too. Okay. Anything further? No? Is there a motion to approve 2022-20C? Is there a second?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yeah.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
All matters listed under Item to Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the municipal council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. And any items requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately. All consent agenda items will be reflected in full minutes. Resolution 181, returning hiring bonds. 183, returning park bonds. 184, renewing membership to the Ocean County Joint Insurance Fund. 188, designating block 170, block 2, in the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, as an area in need of rehabilitation. 193, supporting Southern Region of the School District's efforts to decrease the health benefits burden on taxpayers and employees. 197, acknowledging the hiring of Dennis McCarthy as a laborer in the Department of Public Works. 198, returning dumpster bonds. 199, authorizing execution of change order 1, final dated August 16th, 2022, for the DOT Road Reconstruction Project, Ninth Street, Delaware Avenue, and Seagull Way. 200, returning remaining police detail escrow. 201, appointing special law enforcement officers, class 2. And I'd like to add verbally to the agenda, Resolution 202, awarding a contract to Grand Turk Equipment Company, Inc., through Sourcewell National Block for New Purchasing System. This is the new garbage truck we've bonded for and ready to purchase through state lock.
Okay. Does anybody have anything they'd like to question or talk about? No? Okay, well, I do. 188-2022, the rehab redevelopment. For the same reasons I stated before, I just want to be consistent. I feel that Beach Haven's own zoning laws and land use laws are sufficient, and I feel when we start getting into rehab redevelopment, that's when we run into trouble. So, shall we vote on the first things?
Yeah, you want to do the first?
Yes. Okay, is there a motion to approve everything except 188-2022? Is there a second?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yeah.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Then we'll go to 188-2022, designating block 170, block 2, in the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, as an area in need of rehabilitation. You have Emily Givens, the development attorney, with us tonight. She did attend the Land use Board meeting in which they reviewed the designation of special needs report. Would you mind giving a summary of the Land use Board's review?
Good evening. Sherry said, "My name's Emily Givens, Redevelopment Council." I did attend the Land use Board hearing where they reviewed the area in need of rehabilitation examination report prepared by Frank Little. Frank provided his testimony and went through the report, and the Land use Board voted unanimously to recommend that the area be designated an area in need of rehabilitation. The report details three separate criteria under the rehabilitation section of the local redevelopment and housing law that this particular lot, most people would recognize the reference to Brennans as opposed to the block and lot. It satisfies criteria one, that a significant portion of the structures are deteriorated or in substandard condition. And everyone can see, you struck past, the parking lot is a mess, and the building itself is not in great condition. There's a pattern of vacancy, abandonment, or underutilization of the property. Business has been abandoned for some years now, and nothing is happening at the site. And based upon Frank's information and inspection, and there has been a report with regard to the condition of the sewer infrastructure there, that a majority of the water and sewer infrastructure is at least 50 years old and is in need of repair or substantial maintenance. In addition, it was determined that a program of rehabilitation would be expected to prevent further deterioration and also to promote overall development of the community. So, those are the criteria that have to be met in order to declare this particular parcel an area in need of rehabilitation. This is not a redevelopment plan, this is the designation itself. It is, step one, allows you to move forward with, with other steps, including adoption of a redevelopment plan. But, but the Land use Board again voted unanimously in favor of recommending that this particular block and lot be designated an area in need of rehabilitation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have questions for Emily?
Oh, I got a ton of questions.
Is this the only possible path that the council can take to give a new business owner any type of tax abatement plan?
Yes. So, this is the first step, yes.
Council could not give the business any type of, like, tax break, this would be the first step in doing that to help any new business owner, if they were going to redevelop.
Yes, it would have to be determined to be in either an area in need of rehabilitation or an area in need of redevelopment in order to qualify under the law for that tax abatement. Under the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, all property must be taxed equally, but for an area that needs some additional help. In this case, you have some, the environmental cleanup is completed, but it's only to a certain standard. And so, because of that environmental cleanup that was done, the property owner, prior property owner, sold the property at a certain price, and investment into this area to make it look nice and clean it up is probably going to be a little bit more, but it's not a foregone conclusion. Whoever develops the property is going to have to make a presentation to mayor and council that's satisfactory to you, that the project needs that in order to move forward. So, it's not a requirement that you do that, you do not have to do that.
Thank you. No?
Do I have a motion to approve? Wait a second. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yeah.
Mayor Lambert?
No.
I have a bill list this evening in the amount of $801,384.77.
Did everybody get a chance to review the bills?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yeah.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Just a brief drum of discussion on the proposed capital budget for 2022. We have gone over this list at nauseam with all of you, so hopefully we'll get through it pretty quickly. First item on the list is the upcoming 2022 DOT road projects for Sixth Street and Station Plaza. We're budgeting $400,000 for this road project. We've received a commitment of $315,000 in grants from the DOT for the project. $150,000 to continue to replace bulkheads throughout town, specifically Palomar. Replace the trash truck, $350,000. This has already been approved and effective in a previous bond ordinance, but we are going to keep it on the list so we can see our, our full amount of capital expenditure. $35,000 to replace the Public Works pickup truck, four-wheel drive. We're looking for $3 million for renovations, extensive renovations to the emergency operations center. $75,000 to purchase police, police vehicles. $60,000 for park improvements, various park improvements. $20,000 for continued installation of tie vouts. $10,000 for each equipment, specifically jetski for each patrol. $75,000 for fuel tank maintenance. $84,000 toward one-third portion of the cost to upgrade the traffic signals at intersection of Third and May and Sixth and May. And then, we're looking at an estimate of $190,000 to complete the Delaware and Taylor Avenue parking project. That would bring this year's capital budget expenditure to $4,449,000. I just wanted to talk quickly about the Delaware-Taylor parking project. I think that's the one project on the list that might be in limbo after we've all spoken. We're looking to re-strive Taylor Avenue to make it safer, smarter, easier to navigate. And then, also re-strive and reservice the parking lot behind Thundering Surf in conjunction with Mr. Rosento, and then to install curb and sidewalk, the safety pedestrians along that west side of Delaware to Fifth Street. So, I know this, this original, our estimate, originally our estimate was $80,000, so see the actual number at $190,000. I wanted to put that out to you to see if you want to go forward. You know, some of you would like to see this continue to go forward so that it can set us up for possibly a clean parking initiative in Taylor Avenue. It could be significant revenue for the town, so I just want to hear your thoughts.
It should be noted, too, that the parking areas that we're talking about are actually borough-owned. The borough owns right of way behind Thundering Surf and Fantasy Island. One's a little bit bigger, so it's not like we're doing something for a private enterprise that is borough property, we're looking to improve here.
I have a couple of comments. I, a number of years ago, myself and Don Cactus met with some parking people that basically do paid parking. And I just want to make it clear that if we were to put paid parking in anywhere in town, we would do it so that anybody that was a taxpayer in town would not have to pay for parking. And that can be done, because it's done by looking at the license plates of the car. So, the taxpayer could, would register their vehicles with the town, and if they parked in any of these places, they would not get charged. So, basically, it would be renters and tourists that would be paying for parking, but we could generate quite a lot of money that way. And in looking at money that we need to run the borough, it's always prudent to try to figure out ways we can increase revenues without raising taxes, and this is one of the ways. So, in that respect, if we, if we want to move towards paid parking, basically, it would be prudent to reline that area. I think we can get a little bit more, but not a huge amount, for the more parking, it's more of a safety factor. I do, I was sort of shocked at this number. It seems like a huge number for rewinding roads, and I don't understand why it's so large.
Some portions of the Taylor Avenue lot also need to be resurfaced, and then it's quite a bit of curb and sidewalk in as well.
Right.
What percentage is, I know the curb and sidewalks are expensive, as we've talked about to me for a long time, we just never learn. What percentage, you have any idea in that testing?
Didn't bring the breakdown with me, but Frank Little did provide an itemized list of costs, so I can share that with you.
Okay.
I know that the chief had major concerns about pedestrians not having any place to walk in this area.
Right, well, it is a very, I ride my bike down there a lot, and there's a lot of traffic down there. It is rather dangerous. I think with so many kids on bikes and that sort of thing, there's a lot of kids down there, so I think the safety factor is important, but it's true.
Is this the time to discuss the EOC, or should we just?
Yeah, wait a minute, let me talk about the other things first. Yeah, please, your mic. Okay. So, I think, we talked about before that upgrading the traffic signals, and I know I was pretty much against all of it, so I just, now that, I'd much rather see the Taylor Parking Project move forward because it is dangerous down there, the sidewalk down there. We lost almost 30 grand with each badge revenues this year, we have to make that up somehow. Some type of paid parking in the future is going to bring in additional revenue to the town, which we're going to, we're going to need, so this is the first step in doing that, and it's not going to get any cheaper, so I think we need to really move forward. It's horrible back there, we have to, we have to replace that lot.
I prefer not to do a trade-off, though. I prefer to the traffic.
This is my problem with the traffic signals, there's not, there's nothing wrong with them, they're not playing.
Well, they're not giving you a pedestrian countdown, they're not flashing. These people don't, they need something in their face to remind them that it's not the time to walk. And I feel like the county is doing a project already, we're joining them. They're going to be doing other things, they're going to be upgrading the Ninth Street traffic signal as well. In fact, they were actually pushing pretty hard to get us to jump on more to the place, all of them. My intent would be to change. And they're going to share the cost with us 15%.
Yeah, but right, they're county roads, we pay a third of the taxes people pay over the county.
And we pay a maintenance for each light annually as well, which, once we do this and we do the upgrade, the maintenance will, we will relinquish the maintenance cost back to them.
The yearly maintenance on them, does that outweigh this $84,000?
$84,000 for two traffic lights, seems like a lot.
I'm just saying, I'd rather the parking first, and I just want to cut that, and then also with the, I thought we were going to do a rotating basis for trucks, so last year, we also got a brand-new police pickup truck, same price, and I thought we were going to stagger this year and then get one next year, because we have, now we have 13, and that's how I thought we were going to do it. And also with the Public Works.
Public Works is on every other year. So, we didn't, I don't know.
You got a loader.
Yeah. And I think what the chief did was, he had signboard and some other equipment that he originally requested for this year, and he decided that he preferred to continue to upgrade his vehicles, because he's wanting to get rid of those Hummers, and he needs high vehicles, he prefers to go invest in more trucks.
Without the Hummers, we still have 13 police vehicles, so that's why I thought we were going on that 14 year basis and do the police vehicle next year, especially since we're putting in the new garbage truck, and then the four-wheel drive truck for the Department of Public Works.
So, where, where do we stand with the traffic light upgrades? Are we unanimous that we're not going to do this? We're taking it off the table?
I was allowed to begin, so I don't, they're not broken.
Well, I know there was a discussion with the chief about, well, beyond that, the legality, and that was my concern then.
And we did discuss this at previous meetings, and that's why I went back to the county and said, "Yes, we're on board." They drafted this agreement, I mean, they, they thought they had a, at least a verbal equip, you know, commitment from us when we went back to them, and said, "Yes, we've decided on two lights."
Now, we have the double in price of the Taylor Avenue parts, and that's why it's coming in, excuse me, Taylor Avenue.
The paving.
I mean, can we afford both? I personally, the traffic light is not a priority. We, I think they were, I mean, it just seems very expensive. I'd like to know what, so they take over the maintenance, how much is that? I mean, I'd like to see what payback is to the county. Personally, I think the county roads, they should be doing, they should be. I mean, I'd like to see what payback is to the county. Personally, I think the county roads, they should be doing, they should be paying. I, I, and I don't remember ever agreeing that we were going to, I, I remember the discussion. I guess I was maybe.
We were on the same page if we were.
Yeah.
I just think with Chris.
I mean, I just need a consensus so I know what.
Yeah, I would say no at this point, too. I mean, I know I had a conversation this morning about it. But people don't stop whether you got a security warrant or not at this point. And it's really, the priority is the parking lot. And that area there is really unsafe, more unsafe than I think having a hand on some stuff. Okay, they'll come back to us, I'm sure, next year.
What do you want to do about the vehicles then? Do you want to have another discussion with the department heads that are asking for them?
I know that you talked to the department heads and Chris and then you talked to the department. I hope, I was on, so they haven't. Is there something of explanation? Why does I thought we want to be on a rotating basis with the vehicles?
Right.
Wasn't there a problem? They were experiencing more problems maintenance-wise with the vehicles than they originally thought.
And definitely mean time's an issue, too, right now.
I'm sorry.
Mean time. You order a truck now, you might not get it till next year. Next, August.
Right.
Well, I think it would be great if they got rid of those Hummers.
We're working on it. Yeah, we're working on it. At least trying. We're trying to give them away.
Nobody wants them.
They're not ours. They're not, we don't own them. Police vehicle?
I, I, I haven't talked to the chief about it, but I, I mean, I, I know that the police have worked extremely hard this summer. And if they, if they really feel the need of a vehicle.
That's the only item that's requested.
That's, that's.
And I would have to say the same thing about that.
No.
Last year, we had that. I do see, you know, I have last year's here. I see them on a rotating for two years and there wasn't anything in their slot for this year, so.
And I think you're, you're correct. It's going to take a long time to get the vehicle. I'm interested in any kind of vehicle running the truck.
Well, we have a mechanical staff, so we have a good means of programing anything. So we try to get a way, have a backup if we can. We don't always have that luxury.
My understanding was from the chief that the vehicles are not holding up as well as we would have hoped. And as you mentioned, with the lead time and all that, so I'm okay with leaving that in.
Any, any other items of concern for you?
Just the, again, the. No. Because I guess I see the pickup truck, I see, I mean, there's a couple. Now the EOC renovation.
Yeah.
This is why we're being very conservative. Trying to.
You know, it's unfortunate. The EOC, as I think most of you are aware, has been deeded to be chaven. But there are a lot of stipulations on it and it's not ours to just do whatever we want with it. It must be used for emergency purposes, to housing emergency personnel, that kind of thing. Unfortunately, it has declined into a state of disrepair, and that's the problem. The government could take it back from us and they could sell it at market value. We could try to buy it back, but that would probably be at least twice what it would cost us to renovate. So that probably wouldn't be a very sound financial decision either. However, when you're looking at a $3 million renovation cost, that's pretty scary as well. And that's the problem. I did learn from the chief the other day that we lost two officers this summer. One because he was in an accident leaving very late at night, well, after a shift. And then he was out for, I guess, the rest of the summer. Another one just couldn't do the commute. This is the kind of building where we could house these employees. You know, we all know first aid is very, very desperate for help. I know the fire department can always use more. Certainly, the police department, as I just said, has a need. It would be great to get this building back up and running and God forbid we ever needed it again for emergency purposes. But here we are. We're sitting on this very, very valuable piece of real estate, which is literally, totally falling down. And that's our predicament here.
And one of the goals is to enter into agreement with the fire company to initiate a live-in training program in the summer that can bring folks down and train with them and stay there, work in town, train.
I'm 100, I'm 100% okay with the renovation. I agree with you 100% of this. It's a very valuable piece of property. We're crazy to let it run down and we need to house people. And it can be used for housing anybody in an emergency situation. Police, lifeguards, Public Works people that might have to be here on weekends in nighttime. And, and nobody can get housing. Restaurants are desperate for housing. We can't do it for that, but maybe by having our emergency people in there, we open up some other space for some of the businesses. So I, I, I think we're crazy not to do that. We have this extremely valuable piece of property. It served us well during Sandy. If we hadn't operated out of there, we would have never gotten this building. One of the reasons we were able to get grant money to help support this is, this building cost our taxpayers $5 million total. What's the building to ship problems costing your taxpayers? About 20, what I understand, 20, over 20 million. And it's a huge amount of difference. And if we had to try to get in the old building and work out of there, we would have never had this building. We couldn't have gotten grant money. So it served us well. And certainly, there will be other storms here. We all know that. So it's crazy not to have a functional emergency aid building that we can, and it, and it, there's lots of property. We have that big garage. We have more garages down there to house vehicles and keep them out of the weather. So I, I just think it was crazy not to do that.
I mean, I agree with you. I think that it's important to do this to, you know, I've been in there. I've worn it. It's not functional. It is a valuable asset to our community, to, you know, first responders as well as to taxpayers to have something that works well for our community here. I know it's a lot. I, I told everyone that we haven't had this large of a capital improvement project for multiple years now. So, you know, we can't continue this. Every council is already even trying to renovate. It's expensive, so.
So the scope of work would include some structural infrastructure repairs, replacement of some exterior stairs and platforms, construction of a new raised generator platform, replacement of the generator, repairing the surrounding sidewalks and parking area, replacement of windows, accessible community toilet rooms, upgraded finishes. And because this will be an R3 dormitory use group in construction, sprinkler system is required. So the sprinkler system as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to make everybody aware because it is kind of a, an eye-popping number.
All right, then, real quick, the water utility. We're looking at phase two of the 25-year water main replacement project. So phase two is 2.4 million for the next phase of water replacements. They're requesting $35,000 for street overlays, which is trench works, trench repairs, things like that. $200,000 to repair the reservoir and then additional $35,000 for a pickup truck. For a total of $2,670,000 for water utility.
I, I think that's really necessary. I, I think we're lucky to have Chris Carson. He's, he's heading this up. He's, he's done a great job. Obviously, water means a lot to us and mains, whether we need to be repaired. In addition, basically, the reservoir desperately needs to be repaired. And that's right next door. So we need to do it. We're lucky that, that we are generating some money from the water main.
You know, we've swirled away some capital over the past couple of budgets for the reservoir. We're hoping that can be enough. It's going to be a big ticket replacement. Okay, so if everyone's okay with these, we're going to hand this off to Sherri Ruler. She's going to decide how she's going to fund it, whether it'll be separate funds or she's going to self-fund. She'll come back to us at the next meeting of the bond for introduction.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, so now we've reached the public comment portion. We always start with the room. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Please be sure.
You can speak on any topic, just so you're all there.
And please try to hold it three minutes and then we will go to the people who are on Zoom. Is there anybody in the room who would like to speak? Lori? Scott?
Scott Cunningham, Sixth Street. I harped on this for probably 10 years now. Herbicide, pesticide, and fertilizers that we're spraying on the thing are cancer causing agents. I'd like to see a zero on commercial blanket spraying of entire lots of Roundup. It's a number one clause, they say, of autism and cancer. While you guys have kids, grandchildren.
But I, I 100% agree with you. But last year, we did, I did, a lot of work on this. And there's a state law that will not allow us to tell people that own property that isn't ours that they can't spray this stuff.
They can spray on residential, but commercial, we can stop them.
Can we?
Yes.
Well, we'll look into that because I am 100% with.
This is killing, you have kids. This is going to kill your kids.
I totally agree.
All right, I go next subject. Renovation, I think it's a great thing. We need to invest in our community. That's a wonderful thing. If we get local contractors to work on that, I think that would be wonderful. You guys, none of you were here at the time. This makes me feel really old. I was the person that got all the signatures to stop the parking meters. Andy Anderson proposed this under Debbie Woodcraft, got every hotel, restaurant, commercial store. I came in here, we dropped that immediately. This is bad for business. Do anything but no parking meters. It's like cancer. You say, you're going to Taylor Avenue, what's going to end up throughout the town? It spreads through the body. Okay, I won't go any further on that. I live in the redevelopment zone. This is where. That property's been abandoned on Fifth Street. We all, that looks like hell. You should be being fined every day. Now it has to be redeveloped. Yes. Redevelopment is not made for multimillion-dollar pieces of property. It was for abandoned properties in the intercity. We brought it to Beach Haven. It's a great word. But the redevelopment, if you want to redevelop it or upgrade whatever, that falls on the developer. This doesn't mean you get nine units. You've got to remember, right across the street, we have Fosters and that's this street. These are two businesses that closed at six o'clock. We went home and it was quiet. You put nine units or eight units on each property and then say, oh, we get, you know, we get one low income. Low income, does that mean we're going to use foreigners to build it? Because I've seen all the low income and all the buildings we've thrown in. There's to tell Americans on these jobs. If we're going to build low income for an American, let's build it with American people, workers, not foreigners. This would help our country. There's no parking in the center of the community right now where I live. I mean, I live across the street from, you call Victoria Rose. But they park their cars at my house and leave in there for three full weeks. Nothing I can do. If you put these stores in there on both sides of the street and pack it in there with about, what? You get nine, nine, 18 units. What's that, 36, 40, 50 cars? It'll be parked right up and down the whole of our day and night. And then you can say, oh, we'll make them park elsewhere. 100% lot coverage is wrong. If you want to build on these properties, you should leave some lot coverage for the doggies that are going to be in there going poopy. My name is Scott Cunningham. Robert Scott Cunningham. I am running for city council in November. I would like everyone to vote for me. I promise I will do the best to save our towns from going under. Because I mean, right now, we're overpopulated. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey? Okay, Lori had her hand up, then it went down. Okay.
Name and address?
Yes, please.
I have a hard time hearing that. Lori Anderson, 1001 West Avenue. First, thanks to everybody for all you do with all the listening and the hours you spend helping us. And I'm glad to hear that something will happen at the parking at Taylor in Delaware. But I said to myself, do we really need a paid lot? I think maybe the town ought to consider the previous lot coverage that we all have to find. You know, restone it, put clamshells down.
No, we're talking about the existing, the existing lot, nothing new.
But you're going to pay for it?
It's a payment now.
Oh, I'm thinking of the terrible one between the condos and the waterfront.
That's part of it.
Yeah, that is.
That's not all our property. We share that, share that.
Yeah.
Thundering Surf, we have like, they're like, more closer to the Bay of West area and we have like the 20 foot.
Yeah. And the sidewalks are really badly cared. There's some lighting there.
We're looking at clamshells there with curb stops.
So that's what I said, oh, you can put paid parking there. So I have the wrong place. Okay. See what else? If you're going to rebuild the emergency management center, that has to be, because it's borough-owned. You know how this building kind of has certain things, requirements, like, I don't know, it's full of windows or all kinds of crazy things, I heard. That would raise the price, right, of a building down there? Is that?
Haven't heard anything about that.
Does it, does it have an elevator? Does it have to have?
We do have ADA compliance.
Yeah.
And if we're going to be using it as dormitory space, we were just saying that it has to have sprinkler system, which is costly.
And can we make a, we say we have a hurricane and you have 10 families here that didn't leave and they go there? Is it just for emergency management?
People did stay there during Sandy. There were, I mean, it was mostly for emergency management. But I mean, if somebody was desperate, they, they could go there until they could find somewhere else, so.
They were at least feeding a lot of the public.
Yeah. Yeah. I would like to see that world, too. Okay, and paid parking?
No, I don't like that idea. I don't like that idea. It's just we're picking up other revenue through the town to apply to EOC projects and all the projects that we're going to have to redo for boarding and stuff like that. Sorry, I'm sorry. We're thinking of other ways for revenue. So if anybody has any solutions.
The local street, the license plate.
But I mean, it's, I mean, I think, I think it's a nice thing. I mean, you are paying taxes. It's easy to do. And I, I, I mean, it is, there are more people there and people, most people can afford to pay for some.
There are three beach villages. Speaking of beaches, what are we doing with our beaches? They're such fabulous there.
Well, we've, they have been trying. You know, they did push Taylor back and didn't take, but a few days before the ocean came up again. Mother Nature's just been very cruel this year and it seems like everything we do, she takes back. So they kind of.
Chances were twice, you know.
Yeah. Well.
So is Army Corps of Engineers going to come look at recess or?
That's the hope.
Yes, we're due for a cycle. We're at the end of our cycle, yes.
You guys are me, making.
Thank you. John?
Good evening. Same as Lori. Thank you for letting us do.
Address, John?
I posted a.
John, address?
John Harvey, 211 Second Street. Yeah, I posted a piece to hate Beach Haven this week. Hopefully provoked some thinking. And the title of it was, are we nearing a tipping point in Beach Haven? So I'm not too glad to send it to you. And a lot of people, I found out, don't know what a tipping point is, and I'm sure you do. So I thought it'd be a good idea of clarifying what it is. And it's basically the critical point in a situation beyond which is significant. And it's basically the critical point in a situation beyond which a significant and often unstoppable effect or change takes place. It can be positive and it can be negative. And that's one of the dilemmas have. And an example would be, are we, without maybe intentionally intending to do so, moving from a great place to live to a travel destination? And when I asked, you know, purposes and stuff the last couple years, nobody ever said we want to be a great travel destination. But that's quickly what will be coming. And I believe it's because we're not doing enough to ensure the community provides mutual benefits to residents, developers, landlords, and visitors. We tend to deal with the issues like today, which are important, but they don't look at the bigger picture. They don't look at what's happening. And I can give you lots of ideas amazingly, and I'll talk about them tonight. There was a great example that came in front of the land use board meeting. Some of you were on that meeting, which was the Chegg application for 222 seats. It's where they're expanding location, which by the way, is not including pizza place nor the expanded takeout. The Chegg requested expansion from 130 seats to 222 seats, with some confusion, 130, 150. Raven's letter says 130 is the original pound, so I'll go with 130. So that would have been a 71 percent increase, right, from when the ownership took over. The L U D showed restraint by approving only 196 seats. That's a 50.1% increase over what they had three years ago. And again, it does not include things. The amazing thing about this is it's with no requirement providing either parking or contributing financially to a creative long-term solution. It raises, raises the responsibility problems. There's an answer for this, I believe. Okay? So the question is, why is this happening? Why wouldn't we allow a 51% increase in seating with no expectation that they're going to invest in parking, provide parking to the community? By the way, and I get the case of the business, but it's still a small business, they're raking in it, trust me. I don't have a lot of sympathy for Rob when he's put together. He's a terrific business person, and I don't blame him. So why do we have this? And it's each and you. And it's you. You've not revised and outdated, and I believe irresponsible ordinance, which eliminates any and little responsibility for new and redeveloped commercial property developers to contribute to the solution for the problem they're creating first while making significant profits. What could we have done with the business in that case? So listen, Rob, we know you can't provide parking space, but we've determined that a parking space is worth about $10,000. By the way, it's a lot more than that. Okay? We're going to have a fund and we expect you to contribute to that fund. And that's a fund that we're going to take, kick and sweat, buy the property that I've been spoken about, recreate municipal park. By the way, this is an investment. This guy's going to be and probably sell the business for multiple, probably four times what he's going to be about $5 million, $5 million dollars. So two questions. Are there any plans to change the ordinance soon? And if not, why not? Secondly, on the issue of creating additional plans going into next year to ease the congestion on the short term and long term overcrowding, what do you have on your mind? I have one final question. I guess it's for you, Sherri. Why, why does this group have a meeting, live meeting with land use board? We'll have a live meeting. I'll let you guys respond.
I was thinking about your proposal and it just sounded to me just like a bribe. So if someone can't have a parking space on their property, then they pay the land use board, they don't have five parking spaces, they didn't do that?
No, they invested in the community. In the community, by the way, which they're making millions from.
I understand that, but I just don't, I would have to look into it. I just didn't know if that's-
I think it is legal. It has to be drawn up properly. I think other towns have done that. And I mean, basically, if we develop a trust and which would allow the borough to buy something like a civil sign.
I understand that, but to come on a land use board application and I don't have some parking slots, but I'm going to give you, I'm going to just invest-
Here's the alternative. Do you?
I mean, I like-
No, no, not you. Do your job, come up with a reasonable ordinance, and then Chris will, Rob will not be able to stand. I guarantee you, and I've spoken to Rob, he would have paid $700,000 to park in front of seven spots. He would have taken it over 20 year loan and would have paid $700,000. And it's not a bribe. I mean, this is business. I think it's a bribe when he comes in and we give him variances. Or we say, hey, we got an ordinance, we're going to lay down. You know, and trust me, on Second Street, it's insane. We're leaving next summer.
I live here too, all summer, probably around. I understand, but you know, on one side, we need more restaurants, we need more restaurants, and then we need more- No, no more restaurants because they don't have parking. It's just like you're in this middle period. And that's the dilemma that we-
Well, here's the question I'll ask you as I run in the can, but what are you guys doing for the approximately 900 residents that vote? Because they're getting lost in all of this shuffle. We've got to make business great, we have a parking problem, it's going to show. What are we doing for the residents? And to my knowledge, it'll last three years. Anything we've done has been a burden on residents. But that's what I'd like to know. These are the people that vote for you. These are the people that paid the taxes and lived here, and I'm losing, and they're leaving, by the way. And I know you saw notes. And that's what we travel best.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi. Thank you guys for all that you do. My name is Shannon Harkner. I live at 407 Center Street, next to the Holiday Snack Bar. I get nervous talking in front of people, by the way, so I apologize. My husband, my husband owned cafes in Denver for years, for seven years. He got up at 3:30 in the morning, every morning, made the bagels, got the restaurants ready. I'm a small business owner myself. We are completely pro small business. It was shocking to me to talk to the business owners on Center Street and residences, residents, and hear the complete misinformation put forth by the bookers. And I'm now aware that the bookers were sued by residents in Long Beach Township and had the same issues of noncompliance with their zoning board as well, speaking about the Holiday Snack Bar. So what's the constant? Different towns, different neighbors, same people, the bookers. For the record, no one, not us, not the zoning board, have said that outdoor seating is a crime. That is just ridiculous. And the bookers making themselves the victims is ridiculous as well. They are in actuality the aggressors because they're not complying to any sort of law and order. And listen carefully because this is all very clear. In March of this year, Island Voker requested expanded hours for breakfast. There was no discussion about outdoor seating at that time. The expanded hours were granted with the condition there was to be no outdoor seating before 9:00 a.m. That was very clear. Since it's in a nonconforming residential zone. Then a few months later, it was noticed that there was outdoor seating happening. Council members noticed it, other people, and they realized there was no application turned in for outdoor seating. The permits were never filed. The bookers were then informed they didn't fill out the outdoor seating permits and were four days late on them. Eileen asked what options they had to acquire the outdoor seating permit, and she chose to get the temporary permit with conditions. Just like every business in this town. There's conditions, there's permits we have to follow as homeowners. I can't just put an addition on my house without following the rule of law. Zoning pushed their permits through in two days. Again, I'll say the word again, with conditions, so they could have seating for the weekend. Eileen Voker was fully aware of these, just as everyone else is when you get your permit. The conditions were very black and white. She claimed she wasn't made aware of these, again absurd and not factual. The conditions, no outdoor seating before 9:00 a.m. for breakfast. There must be a 10-foot buffer zone between Holiday Snack Bar and our property, the aligning property. No gray area. Nothing was to be in this buffer. Also limited seating, which was very specific. They could not choose how many people they want sitting outside or inside. They were given, as all business owners are, a definitive number of tables and seats per table. Immediately, the bookers started to not comply. And to back up just a little bit, last summer, we witnessed mud flags. The insanely loud acoustic music with two speakers they played for four hours blaring into our house was the first big egregious violation. Our neighbors were witness to this. But to the present, I've heard many of you say, many townspeople say, many talk, that this should be talked out. Why does it have to go to litigation? It's such a waste of taxpayer money. What more could we have done? Well, what do you do when you have conversations and you give warnings and you talk and nothing happens? We spoke to Eileen personally and Brian. We said, please, no seating before 9:00 a.m. Please, no sandboxes on our fence line, three ring tosses on our fence line, benches, bus tubs, a truck for pictures on our fence, five racks in our bushes. Please no power washing at 10:45 at night to 11:30. To no avail, the same thing happened to zoning. They don't listen. They were given warnings. They were given hand-delivered letters. Inspectors have come by, zoning enforcement. Still, the bookers have refused to comply, just as they did in Long Beach Township. So the narrative that we started this is false and zoning will, we, I can't read my handwriting. So zoning delivered summons, and Brian will tell you, because he told us they have a stack of them on their desk. But still, still, they didn't comply and don't comply. Brian will tell you he removed the tables, but not all of them. And you replace them with sandboxes, ring tosses, signs, a truck, bus tubs, flytraps, blenders, benches, a whole plethora of stuff along our fence line. And to this day, there's still no limited seating. There's still breakfast before 9:00. The bookers don't care. Every day, they have violated the law and the setbacks, and you cannot reason with them. That's why it's the second time in two years they've been sued. In the last 15 years, zoning has not, has not given this many summons or taken anyone to the State Supreme Court. The holiday is a tradition. I'm from Texas. I grew up in Texas, in Galveston, Texas. I love Beach Haven. It's wonderful. And in a matter of a short time, the bookers and their complete disregard for the rule of law have managed to pit Center Street against one another in our beautiful historic town of Beach Haven. Please don't let their false narrative blind you to the truth. They were given warnings. We spoke to them. They were visited by inspectors, received letters and the summons, and they ignored all of them and continue to do so. Zoning is in place to protect our town, to keep the history and traditions alive. They're doing, you're doing, your job, and I thank you for that. The bookers are showing that zoning is unimportant, that they don't have to follow the same rules that every business has to. And that's quite frankly, a slap in the face to you, to zoning, to the taxpayers, to their neighbors, to the residences, and our beautiful town. At this present moment, they still seat before 9:00, still oversee outside, still have things in a table in the 10-foot buffer, still block the sidewalk with bikes. You have to walk into the street to get around their sidewalk, which is dangerous. This is, and always has been, in the bookers' hands. They need to do the right thing for all of us and respect and uphold the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize if it was editing I missed, but I was just wondering if we could get an update. I was in the meeting for the discussion and the presentation of the skate park. And then I sent an email asking about follow-up with impervious coverage being a huge concern and the drain that you spoke of and any, any updates that you have on since the presentation of the skate park.
Sure. They do have a preapproval application. See if, to use it and put it there. Since then, it's been discussed. We picked that spot based on public safety. We picked that spot based on public safety. Chief, my house, we figured the police were there, monitoring, and they're ready. I guess after the summons, there's a change of hearts, so discussing the location.
Are any of the areas that are already paved or are we looking at covering impervious coverage?
There has been discussion. A couple people I have talked to, one looked at the school park. I don't know about that, the school playground.
But again, that's not impervious, like that's anything about the draining. I mean, even talking about the 109,000 for asphalt water sitting is the hugest thing to destroy asphalt.
I know you lived there. Back in the day, it was that black pad back in that corner. That's still there. So not looking to add, or actually to use the coverage that that was. You print that and then use that, so we're not adding any more.
Okay, so that was 4,000 to 6,000 square feet, obviously, and I remember small, black pad. That's my concern. You see how it floods. I sent you when you looked at covering for football pictures of it after. And a drain doesn't help if it's draining into a bay that's flooded.
And we're also going to do that. Again, that's as well.
And all over, it goes back to the asphalt, so I'm just wondering-
Three, one, or not. I'm not adding.
So where is it paved by?
You remember back in the corner, back there was that black pad that used to be basement.
Okay.
Then people started doing work, like putting that. I think it was asphalt.
There's a lot of things. I remember when I was younger, they used to flood it in the winter and freeze and escape. It was kind of cool, but it doesn't, it would get cold enough to do that.
Impervious coverage, since we all see the flooding and spending one for asphalt.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak? Mr. Hoffman?
John Howburn, 19 Fairview Avenue. I'm going to make a positive comment. I applaud the council for what they're doing with the emergency medical sector. We've known for years that we have a situation where first responders, police, fire, first aid squads, public works, employees are looking for help because they can't afford to reach it. This is a step in the right direction. And there is a fear that the federal government will take that building back. We don't want that path. We want to make sure that that, that building is used to benefit the citizens and residents of Beach Haven. And like what council for the whole. We're, the number is scary. But I'll remind you that we have a flooding issue, have a flooding issue. Back in 2018, we spent $3 million, my understanding. The project's going to start sometime in the fall to try to mitigate the flooding through, through Mr. Little, through some store management system entitled to some. I think the money is worth as well spent if it's for the money. This is, this is clearly the right.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak? Chief?
Adam Melander, Beaching Fire Chief. I actually just wanted to speak also to Mr. Howburn. On the E O C, give the community just a little, shed a little light on exactly what is needed and why. That $3 million is money well spent, very well spent. The fire company is currently looking to rebuild our current building. We've been looking at doing it over the last few years. In 2019, we got a quote for about $5.5 million. This year alone, that quote went up to $8.3 million, so this is a drop in the bucket as far as what the community needs. I've been working with the council with ideas, the living program, something that we talked about doing together so that we could get, I could get young firefighters from all over New Jersey, Pennsylvania, wherever, that are certified. They can come down. I need volunteers. They can stay at the shore for the summertime, and the community gets workers because everybody knows that we have a staffing shortage here in Beach Haven all over. So everybody wins with this project if it goes through and works well. So I thank you guys for making the decision to put the money into the E O C, especially coming up on the 10-year anniversary of Hurricane Sandy, so that is very much money well spent. If anybody has any questions about the Knox boxes, you can see me after the meeting. I have forums, I could talk about it. And I look forward to seeing you guys all Saturday, October 1st at our fundraiser, the Beach Haven Volunteer Fire Complete Lock Party. Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless Beach Haven.
Anybody else in the room? Mr. Harvey?
What's that? I'm sorry. This is just a continuation. Somebody once told me, never give up the mic until you have a question answered. So I asked you a couple of questions. Right? One is, are there any plans to change this ordinance soon? And if not, why not?
Well, we did discuss it. Yeah, and kind of got tabled for a while. I don't- I don't know exactly why, but it has been under discussion. And as far as your other issues concerned, I agree. If you'll remember, I said something publicly about the fact that I thought we needed to do more to regulate rentals because we see that's happening, that they're being over rented, too many people are coming in. And I was told that there isn't a whole lot we can do about that short of somebody complaining and then the police going and finding that the residences, in fact, overcrowded compared to what it's supposed to be.
And I would just say, get more insight, because there are a lot of things, communication, putting up maximum rentals. It's a fire safety issue. This piece tonight, I write about Chegg, is the first in a series. One next one is going to be able to take down a fifteen hundred square foot house, that put up a four thousand square foot house. Who's worrying about the extra one? I mean, Smitty's house has got nine bedrooms, totally rented, is that eighteen to twenty-three people in the house? Is anybody looking at that?
Yeah, we've discussed that. I sat right here and discussed that several times, John.
I get it, I understand that it's a custom, I only talk about park, right? Three years ago, we had a trolley was the solution, right? And thank God, we didn't go to trial with ill-fated COVID, would have knocked that thing right off the road. But when does the action start on some of this stuff? My third question is, why don't we get a night out during winter to see you guys? And we don't get the same night out in winter to see when you sport?
We've been discussing that in great detail and great length. We have, yes, we've made that request formally. And anybody else in the room? Yes, sir.
My name is Carl Herkenner. I've been a lifelong resident of Beach Haven for quite a while. And I want to thank zoning and thanks everybody here for doing such an amazing job keeping Beach Haven, you know, the special place that I grew up in and bring my kids back, know from grandkids someday. So I guess I wanted to touch on what my wife Shannon, who lives at four seven Center Street. We've, my whole life, I've gone to the Holiday Snack Bar, we've enjoyed it, we enjoyed living there for many years. We've lived next to it for eight years and always enjoyed our friends coming by and saying hello after they had a meal. We're even joining them to have a meal. But I think that it's kind of a theme that, you know, we're a tourist destination, which the businesses do make a lot of money from. But it's changed. The chicken and the egg is trying to push the envelope on how many people they can see and how much money they can make. And we saw that this summer with the Holiday Snack Bar. You know, we were very tolerant during the times of COVID, the seating outside and tolerant of the noise levels. But that kind of subsided this year. Things opened up and went back to normal. The problem was that the brokers, who are the new owners of the Holiday Snack Bar, are trying to turn that into the next chicken or the egg. They have completely ignored zoning and all the violations they've accumulated throughout the summer. Seated as many people as they could against the law, filled their pockets because of greed. I have a couple of pictures. One of which was the restaurant that we purchased our house next to. We have three, four top tables, green grass, beautiful buffer zone of trees. Ten tables outside, half of which are picnic tables left over from COVID. Seating as many as twelve people per table. You might say that's not true. I can show you pictures of twelve people sitting at a picnic table. This is the ten-foot buffer zone. That's our ten-foot buffer zone. They're in a residential neighborhood, zoned residential, on a non-conforming lot. So this is not what I bought my house next to. I love the history of Beach Haven, I just want to protect it. It's overcrowded. And they're in blatant disregard of zoning. And I think they need to be held accountable.
Thank you.
I just want to comment on that, so Mrs. Herkenner and the rest of the public. I cannot speak directly to the litigation, but please know that we haven't turned a blind eye here. Not blinded to the truth here, it's a proper procedure for all zoning requirements. And the borough has litigation towards the Holiday Snack Bar because they have not followed proper procedure. Unfortunately, anytime that litigation occurs, the timing is just very drawn out and very long. So, but please know that we're trying to, again, trying to have that, that middle ground between community and tourism and businesses, and we're trying to find that. And we understand what we're going through. We all live here, we don't now live direct to a business, so I can imagine, you know, the differences that you are having where I live, but please know that we are taking this matter very seriously.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else in the room at this point? No? Sherry, is there anybody on Zoom who'd like to speak?
Jim Lambert.
Good evening, everybody. Jim Lambert, five sixteen North Atlantic Avenue, Beach Haven. I just want to gently remind the council that you don't have to grant variances in any redevelopment plan. And, and don't listen to anybody who tells you they do, because you don't. The Borough Master Plan references ordinance number twenty seventeen dash eleven C, which effectively created the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. And if you read that, or if you read chapter two twelve dash twenty-nine of the Beach Haven Land Use regs, I want to read you this verbatim. It says, "The maximum density permitted for all affordable housing development in the overlay zone is eighteen units per acre." And there's absolutely no reason to ever deviate from that. The same ordinance also says that the maximum impervious is seventy-five percent, maximum impervious. And the implication there is that twenty-five percent of the property remains in its natural state, in some natural state that will percolate groundwater and mitigate the flooding hazard. Third point I'd like to make is floor area ratio is fifty percent maximum in every zone in Beach Haven for a multi-story residential structure. And you can read that in chapter two twelve dash thirteen, two twelve dash fourteen, and two twelve dash twenty-one C. So again, there's no exemption in the Beach Haven Land Use regs for a mixed-use project in the BD zone. Lastly, tandem parking does not work in Beach Haven. And if you, if you want to see it in action, just look in the garage at Victoria Rose. Every Saturday and every Sunday morning, all summer long, I believe there's fourteen tandem spaces and one of them, mostly none, but on occasion, one of them had two cars parked in it. The rest of them are sprinkled all over the neighborhood, making it extremely difficult for those neighbors to park. So my parting comment is this, that there's no way that any redevelopment plan with multiple variances can be consistent with the Borough Master Plan. And don't let anybody tell you otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Connolly?
Hi, thank you. Tim Connolly, two ten South Bay Avenue. A couple of comments, in no particular order, but, you know, I, I, we have an ordinance to not allow bike riding on the sidewalks. And I have to tell you, it is completely ignored and most importantly, not enforced. It is a danger every time I walk out onto my sidewalk and almost get hit by a bike. I understand children who are young, it's more important that we keep their safety and we kind of put up with that on, on the sidewalk. But people over seventeen, eighteen years of age and adults do not need to ride on the sidewalk. And I'd like to know why we're not enforcing this. It's like we just completely ignored it this year. The second thing is speeding. Where we live, right by the firehouse, as you head towards Holgate, people are going fifty mile an hour or higher during the evening. Again, not being enforced. Why are we not enforcing this? And lastly, I keep reading, and when I get up early in the morning and I walk around our town, it looks like a frat party went on. Why are we not putting our police, at least showing a presence during the hours of eleven PM to say three AM? That's when all this is happening. They're breaking things during, during these hours. You could see it for yourself. Again, why are we not enforcing this? I have seen little to no police presence in our town at night, nonexistent. I don't understand it. I understand you can't arrest everyone, but if you show at least that you're there, the possibility of these things going on will stop. My next question is, when are we going to get with modern times and stop this police, the fire siren going off at a blaring rate? Okay, it's not nineteen fifty anymore. Every other fire department volunteer in our state, more than fifty percent of them have done away with this. We have cell phone technology, we have internet everywhere. There is no reason for this to continue. I know we want to consider ourselves still like an old-town feeling, but that's got to stop. It's really got to stop. It is complete utter ridiculousness that we're still dealing with this at this date. On a positive note, one of the ideas to potentially maybe get some revenue in, would we ever think about giving people the ability to sponsor naming our parks, sort of like they do with ball fields in the professional level? Maybe a business would want to become the sponsor and take up the burden of maintaining these parks? Just an idea, just trying to put something positive on, on ending this spin. And lastly, the unfortunate couple that's going through this with Holiday Snack Bar, I, I, I mean, just do whatever's in your power. Is there any way to pull their license to operate? Why does, why do the citizens have to be able to have to keep dealing with this? We have become, you know, we're all pro-business, we all enjoy ourselves tremendously, whether we live there full-time or just during the season, but it's just ridiculous. Pull their license, suspend their license. Enough. Why do, why does this particular couple, and I'm sure there's other neighbors there, have to keep going through this? It's not, it's just not right. So we need to start thinking about that while we're trying to be pro-business, and I get it, because I'm a businessman myself. But there's got to be an end to this nonsense. It's just, it's got to stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Connolly, I'd like to speak to your comments regarding the police concerns. We had all summer long neighborhood watch meeting every Tuesday to address concerns. And I was pretty much at every single meeting. And the police were doing their best to enforce people riding their bicycles on the sidewalks. Actually, Chief Markowski said that he would like to take all other notifications away and only be, do not ride on the sidewalks. They do their best, but when they are, you know, going in a car, that's one way, trying to chase them down on foot is another. But they do their best to, to, to issue tickets to these people. The speeding in the south end, I mean, we can address that with chief and ask about that, if that's not a problem. And I will briefly speak to the fire siren, it is in the process of being worked through. I've been in the meetings with the fire department. You know, the, the main issue is that if all else fails, the fire siren would go off. Once the new sirens are installed, we'll be able to manage that a little bit better. So just, I know, I feel like I keep telling everyone that it's in the works. I understand it sounds like a broken record, but in this past two years that I've been on council, it is legitimately in the works to move to either reducing at some point. So, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Don't see anyone else in the room.
Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment.
You want to take the last one?
Sure.
Wheeler?
Thank you, sorry, I thought I had pushed the button, but I didn't. So I wanted to, this is.
Say your name and address for the record.
Wheeler Beeman, four nineteen Center, also a business owner in Bay Village. I wanted to.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Go ahead.
I wanted to address the Knox box issue. I'm against forced implementation of the Knox box for one simple reason, and that is freedom. This is America, the land of the free, the freedom to make a wise decision, or a stupid one for that matter. If this product or system is as good as they say it is, then I should have the freedom to choose. I suggest the council implement the option of the box with the fire department and let the business owners decide what they need to do for them. At the end of the day, preventing additional damage to my property is ultimately my responsibility. And for that simple reason, I think the decision should rest solely with the business owner and not the fire department or the council. Thank you.
Thank you. For real? Okay, so we will close the floor to public comment and move on to final remarks by council. Mr. Allen, would you like to kick it off?
Sure. This is a good meeting, there's a lot of discussion. To sense of the EOC, I look at it every day. It's a desert, you know, I think we've been holding off on it because the status of possession has been in question for some time now. But not doing this would be a giant mistake based on the fact that it'd be an asset to the community, but to the island in general. During the same duty witness that, you know, this, I was there and watched this, that everything, first thing. Spread across team set up there, organized there, everything ran from there to help, you know, the community back up on its feet. That also being set to use that property to use municipal property to that deep water dockage. Fire companies are interested in improving their water program down there. So fixing this, getting this up, I know it means a lot. And we, that was really the category of product, everything for building today. The building design is pretty stringent to maintain that quality. So that, now that I've said that, the past weekend was beautiful, something that was something we all wait for. But it continues on for a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner.
Usually after the capital budget, I feel like I'm going to throw up. So much money that I actually feel, I feel good with this, with these projects. I'm talking about the EOC building, loving the EOC building, it's very nostalgic and old, but it has so much potential for this town. And going along with the EOC building and especially the Knox box comment, we have a volunteer fire department, so if they're asking for help to reduce the time of their spending on a call because they've been waiting, you know, because they don't want to, they know that there's clearly no imminent danger, but they don't want to knock their door down and cost you hundreds of dollars because they just have this Knox box key. If it's reducing their time for these not necessarily real emergencies and more volunteers, we're going to work with them because we're a community. And that's the main reason why I think that the Knox box is a good idea to do a volunteer fire department. Their time is volunteer basis, I mean, it's a work ethic. It's a suggestion from the chief and the fire department, so I think it's a good suggestion. Local summer, made it through another season. Thank you to the beach patrol who already left, the badge checkers, the first aid squad, police and fire, Department of Public Works and all other municipal employees. They've worked endlessly to make the summer successful for everyone. Summer season is difficult for people that live here. It's two months of a lot of difficulty for actual people that live here. We all realize that, and we are always constantly looking for solutions. So we will continue to work with everyone over the winter time to make next summer better, less congested. I don't know how that can happen, but we, you know, we are going to be working. better, less congested. I don't know how that can happen, but we, you know, we are going to be working through some solutions in, in the winter time. And I know that we can definitely all come together and, and work through that. And then lastly, I'm sure Keely has gone, but, uh, I really appreciate the, you know, the old fashioned scout and police scouts working on their projects and helping betterment to the community and just, you know, her, how she wraps kindness into that, especially during the season and everyone just needs to be just a little bit more kind toward each other moving forward with that. But other than that, um, I think that's
Thank you. Dr. Davis?
Oh, yeah, I, I'd like to just address Lori and some of the things she said relating to, um, um, ocean rise and the beach erosion. Um, we, we're in a bad situation. Um, the ocean is rising. Since the mid 1940s, the ocean has risen about 1.4 feet. Doesn't sound like a whole lot, but it really is a lot. The problem that I see, and I've spent a lot of time talking with scientists, uh, at various universities, particularly Stockton, Davenport, the Marine Biology Program and Coastal Research Center. Uh, but the problem is that the ocean is rising much faster now than it was 50 years ago. So it's accelerating and a lot of the ice caps are melting. We're losing a lot of the, the, um, glaciers that we, we had. Um, uh, actually you can get through the Marion Straits now, but the ocean is definitely rising. It's rising at a faster rate and, uh, most of the scientists are predicting if things go as they are now, that by, uh, 2050, it will rise another foot and a half. And that's a lot. And that's going to mean that we're going to continue to lose our beaches and we're going to continue to have flooding. And as you, most of you noticed in many days, this summer, when the sun was out and we had very little rain, it wasn't high tide and we did have a a full moon, but water was saltwater coming up in the storm drains is not a good sign. Uh, so this is going to continue and I think we have to do whatever we can to try to mitigate this. And there's many, many things that we can do, one of which is of course, uh, trying to create more pervious land. I, I, I'm not thrilled with the windmills, but I think they're necessary. I don't think this is the answer to the problem. But I do think that, um, it's a start and we in New Jersey on the coast have to show that we're willing to put up with maybe what some people think are ugly, uh, something ugly to try to stop or slow down the rise in the ocean. This is going to continue and I, I know in my lifetime, I'll still have a house here, but if the, if the water continues to rise and half the, every day you can't even get down to the main street to go to the store, people aren't going to, your real estate values are really going to go down. And, and I think we have to be cognizant of that and really be diligent about trying to do what we can to decrease um, or to slow down the rise of the ocean. Uh, the other problem, and I don't, I don't need to be giving a lecture, but the, the other problem that we, we have is we have a large island out right beyond the inlet. And it, it, it has become a habitat because a lot of birds are nesting there. And when that becomes designated as a ha- habitat by the EPA, what that means is we can't utilize that sand to bring back to our beaches because now it is an active bird nesting location. So every time we try to replenish these beaches, the, the sand keeps moving south. So it's a catch 22. And I know our public works department is working extremely hard to keep the beaches, uh, usable and we, we just have to, as I think as, as citizens and we, we have to think of what we can do to try to reduce the carbon footprint and to keep as much permeable land as possible. It's just a big concern. Thank you. And thanks to everybody that came to the meeting and, uh, all that, I know the police and gay. It, it's very hard to enforce a lot of these rules. We don't have enough police. Hard to get police. It's not a real popular job right now. It's really hard to find. So that's another problem. That's all I have to say for the night.
Thank you. Mrs. Rutherford?
Um, I just wanted to also thank Keely. I know she's not on, but, um, something that I really tried to live by here in Beach Haven, actually my entire life is that when you treat your others as yourselves, um, good things come from that. So, um, I appreciate creating that small library for kids to enjoy for years to come, to bring some enjoyment to our community. Um, I also want to thank the guards. Um, I feel like Megan and her staff lead that way as well as, as treating others as themselves. Um, they spent time this summer, um, treating their staff to events that they could go to. Um, like going to the February and things like that, really pouring into their staff. So we need more leaders in our community like that. And I, I appreciate that, I mean, that kind of leadership. Um, I also just want to touch on the partners. I appreciate you coming tonight. It took a lot to come and speak to this, um, concern about the Holiday Snack Bar. Um, all of you probably know, I live on Center Street as well and I have been witness to this situation and I do not take it lightly. I have been in conversation, um, regarding the innovation as well. So, um, I hope that we can come to a resolution that works for our community as a whole. Um, when people take the time to do things just for themselves and not for their community, um, these types of things happen. So, thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, um, very quickly, just wanted to say, um, as far as I know the problem, I see business owners here and we've met. And I see concerned citizens here and we've gotten your concerns and it's interesting because one group says, what are you going to do about this? The other group's saying, hey, you know, we're the, trust me, we have been working to try to find a balance. We are open to suggestion. We will continue to meet over there. Um, it's, it's not easy, you know, everybody has a point of view and we're trying to make it so our businesses are successful, but we also understand there's a quality of life issue. Um, I couldn't agree with more with that. But do I have simple answers? No, I don't. Um, so on that subject, but moving on, um, I wanted to publicly acknowledge of several police officers. I got a nice letter, um, from a Mr. Fury who wanted to give a shout out to Officer Gabe Murray, who after he was off duty, uh, Mr. Fury approached him when he still had a little time left on duty. He said, if you can wait. Uh, he was having trouble with dead battery. He said, I will come and help you when I get off, which he did. And the gentleman was so impressed, he wrote a letter. So I'd like to publicly acknowledge that. And also, um, I was on the tennis court about 10 days ago when there was a medical emergency and Officers McCaffrey, Close, and Sergeant Lemo all showed up like almost immediately. Uh, it was amazing, their professionalism, their knowledge, their ability to deal with the situation before the ambulance came. And I'm sure we've all had the experience that the police are always there first. And I think we take that for granted, but we are very, very lucky to have such a wonderful police department, fire department, E M Ts, lifeguards, you know, like I said, I think we tend to take them for granted sometime, but we are very fortunate in Beach Haven. And I just want to also mention that this Thursday, the Compassion Cafe will end their second season up in Seashell. It really is an amazing organization. If you haven't been there yet, try to get there on closing day because you'll hear the staff talk about their experiences as well. Um, thank you all for coming and in that note, meeting adjourned. Is there a motion, I should say? Okay.